Can you tell us a story so you can make sure my daughter can read it?
He says, "Count to ten, Katie."
Just work on it.
Okay, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten.
Perfect, thanks.
Did you bring them for everybody?
Man, I have a difficult feeling.
Oh, you do?
Sorry.
That's okay.
It's not a crisis, and it doesn't have any money in it.
I love Katie.
Hi, how are you, Randy?
Good, how are you?
Oh, well, thanks. Okay, I'm ready when you are.
Thank you for this, Bruce, I didn't know that.
Is this for the board, Jack? Yes.
Yes.
I have seen this.
I'll give a point for this one.
Don't worry about it. Everything's wonderful. Can talk about it, I'm wonderful.
Well, that's what I wanted to hear, but I'm not sure.
Don't trust anything. Thank you. Uh, I need to discuss with the board whether we need to decide on what Peter's, uh, Peter Harrich brought up, and maybe we need to do it when we have more here. If Peter wants to step down as co-chair.
Vice chair.
You, you started.
No, I haven't started.
Okay, then just let me know. Thank you.
Vice chair.
There's a difference.
I know. There is. So, should that be our first order of business, or should we wait until we have Mr. Carr?
Just to figure if he's going to show up today.
I know.
If you're the chair, we decide. Well, I mean, we have a forum, so we can elect a new vice chair, which I would care to be, and someone with more experience.
I'm going to say, "We want you to be the vice chair." There's reason why I'm the chair. Now that you did step back. Now that you did step back, okay?
You had your chance. You had your chance.
So, anyway. This will be the planning board meeting for the day of, let's see what day it is. I think it's like September 24th, right?
Yes, it is.
We are no longer in the summer season. This is the shoulder season. In Truro, we are at Truro Town Hall. We are continuing our deliberation on the marijuana bylaw. The board has other business to take care of. It may hold up on that. I think we can hold up on that.
Sure, you can wait.
We're going to wait on the other bit of, uh, business at hand. Okay, so we're going to try to pick up where we were. And finish this up if we can. I see, uh...
Oh, thanks.
To ensure compatibility.
Thank you. Yeah, absolutely.
Additional recommended language. How far is this from that? And this is what we've done so far?
That's just your Mac and...
Okay.
Here I am.
Um, we do have Tim McCarthy recording the meeting also, just so we know. The board members at the present time are Jack Reamer, Bruce Bowden, Steve Solan, and Karen Tosh. It's afraid that's all we could muster on this day. We'll, uh, take it up from... It's got to be on your notice. We're close to the end here, this is to ensure compatibility. The residential character of Truro and the surrounding neighborhood all enclosed buildings and structures permitted for use by an RME or NNTC, including all structures for cultivation and processing, that are limited in size and proportion to lot size. Alright, so we have some alternate language to put in here. Did you already add this language, including all structures? So we need to talk about this language a bit. Karen, have you looked at the language on both of these? And do you comprehend that we need to be, uh, consistent with our house size by law also? Not really be an adversary to the other bylaw in every respect?
Well, I think so. Um, and I believe this language, and actually, in earlier discussions with the co-op, they, they were not, they were okay with this, um, 5,000 square foot for enclosed buildings, not greenhouses. Uh, no limitation on greenhouses and hoop houses, but, um, so they initially were okay with it. I can't say that they are now, but, but it, it certainly doesn't make any sense if we're going to limit houses to then allow, you know, 20,000 square foot of building of some sort. Whether it's a barn, or a metal building, or whatever it is. So, I, I support this language. In the R district, I think it makes sense.
I think so, in the R district. Okay, so, the first sentence is, "To ensure compatibility with the residential character of Truro, comma, or do you want answer around the neighborhood?" Anyone?
No.
Leave it out. Answer around the neighborhoods, strike. "The use of greenhouses, comma, defined to have walls and roofs constructed predominantly of glass, or other transparent or translucent materials, are to be encouraged in lieu of other types of enclosed buildings for marijuana cultivation." Period. Therefore, comma, "The total aggregate floor area of all enclosed buildings used by a RME or NNTC," capitals on those. Open parentheses, "but not including greenhouses or livable floor area," close parentheses, "allowed in the residential and NT6A districts by a special permit issued either by the planning board or zoning board of appeals shall not exceed a floor area as measured..." A floor area, I'm sorry, comma, "as measured from the exterior faces of exterior walls, comma, of 5,000 square feet on a two-acre plot lot, on a two-acre lot, comma, plus 500 square feet for each additional contiguous acre of land or minus 500 square feet for each contiguous acre of land less than two acres." Comma, I might have left out a comma somewhere. Two-acre lot, comma...
Yeah, two acres, correct.
Plus 500, oh, you forgot. Acre of land. Just on the... I'll just, I'm going to read it again from, "Or zoning board of appeals shall not exceed a floor area," comma, is there, right?
Yep.
"As measured from the exterior faces of exterior walls, comma..."
Yep.
"...of 5,000 square feet on a two-acre lot, comma, plus 500 square feet for each additional contiguous acre of land, comma." That was the line I forgot. "Or minus 500 square feet for each contiguous acre of land less than two acres, comma, or, as the case may be, comma, where the square footage per acre specified above is pro-rated for a portion of an acre." You want me to drag that wording around?
I, I think that wording is okay, but I think, well, or add, we should just fix this special permit issued either by the planning board or the zoning board of appeals, and just address that right now, and put the right one in there, and be consistent.
I think that's going to become a discussion point.
Right.
And I have no problem with that being the point now. I just was wondering how much further we had to go? Because that would be, uh, let's go through it again, and find every place where it's mentioned, so I...
Okay, how far do you want to do it?
Yeah. I totally agree, we have to address that and discuss it. Mr. Chairman? Yes, Jack? I have some additional language that I would like to be added, to one, to what you just read. More language. So we'll discuss this right now, which is marijuana cultivators. Before we type this in, let's, let's try and, I don't know if you can type it up so everyone can see it. Maybe that would be best. Marijuana cultivators located within the residential district and NT6A district are only eligible to apply for a special permit if, one, the parcel on which the cultivation is to take place is two, the number two, acres or greater, and two, all marijuana cultivation activities are set back a minimum of 50 feet from all abiding properties. Mr. Chairman? Where was that language that we lost that language from?
We have 1.5 acres. It's already in the bylaw. This is someone else's post.
Yeah, it's a different one.
I don't really have a strong opinion about the setbacks, but we said 1.5 on the draft, and I don't believe Pure Joy Farm is two acres, so that eliminates them, if you change it to two. So, I'm, I support leaving it at 1.5.
Mr. Chairman? Yes, Jack? The, um, I think it's, uh, 48, chapter seven, is it, section three off the top of my head, defines agricultural pursuits, and identifies five acres and two acres as coming under the agricultural control. I feel that a, uh, two-acre requirement is more consistent with this type, with these types of activities. And I think it, um, is more important in a residential district, or in the, uh, in the Truro 6A district with respect to the character of those neighborhoods. That's why I, I feel strongly about the two-acre requirement. And, um, if there's an enormous amount of pushback for legitimate reason, I'm willing to consider it, but, um, I really think that for the purpose of growing, which is recognized as either being five acres or two acres, and state law, that why doesn't our law incorporate that as well? I heard you, Jack.
Well, our current by, our current use table does not require two acres. It does require more than five, uh, and addresses less than five for animal husbandry. But that use table is for principal uses, not accessory uses. So currently, in the instance of a place like Pure Joy Farm, their operation, like growing, is an accessory use to the dwelling. So, I don't think our use table follows the state agricultural, uh, statute. So, I don't know why now we would, we would be stricter than our traditional use table has been.
The point is that it wants to be strict because it's cannabis. I think that's the reason. Is that not the reason, Jack? I mean, if it was tomatoes, I don't think you'd care. Well, in this case, it's a commercial agricultural pursuit. Yes, well, so would tomatoes, I mean. Yes, it is. And in order for it to be considered by state law, um, a farm, it needs to have at least two acres. I know we're not talking about farms here, um, as a collective, um, understanding, but we are talking about parcel size, and that's what I believe to be more in, in consideration of the activity that's being pursued. And in this case, I think the two-acre minimum is more reflective of that type of activity. And, um, I think overall would give more cushion to these pursuits coming before us as, and then relate to permits for use in agricultural zones, in, in residential zones, excuse me. And a requirement for the two acres probably addresses some of the concerns that neighborhoods might have going forward for, um, these types of agricultural activities happening in there already established neighborhoods. I think the two-acre requirement would help to address some of that. And, uh, then where do you put marijuana co-ops? Because the cultivator has to have all of the property in one space. And the co-op does not. So you're saying that the co-op, each individual parcel needs to be two acres, two acres? Yes, for the permit, we require two acres. As I understand it, there are already established farms that are members of, in this case, one of the, uh, potential co-ops, that already have sizable amounts of acreage in excess of even five, that may be, um, having other tenants or members pursuing the same activities on those sites. Um, I'm thinking more in terms of what's going to happen down the road after we, um, have the initial approvals of the, uh, parties that have been to our open meetings, that we may eliminate potential abuses, uh, down the road. And, um, I think that should be factored into some of our concerns here. Well, I don't know, I was at a, uh, forum that the co-op held, and it didn't seem to me that all of them had two acres. I know some had. So if this, if this were to be changed to two acres, would you be eliminating most of the, or a significant portion of the growers who were intending to be part of the co-op? Then I wouldn't feel that the two acres is right. But I understand what you're bringing forward. I understand that the, um, agricultural uses that were described even by the ag commission, uh, which had originally been five acres, and then the state of Massachusetts recognized a two-acre, uh, plot as a farmable plot. And now, and now we're looking at one and a half. I don't know how to find a happy medium. I, I totally agree that you're looking towards the future to protect the residential district. And I'm not really sure how to proceed, and I'll just ask the board to wait on it, and we'll try to make a decision. Did you hear you say, two acres is... I'm just saying, that one of the plots that the co-op has less than two acres, for sure.
I believe Pure Joy Farm is maybe 1.9, but it's, it's just under two, if I'm not mistaken. And that's the property on Old Bridge Road, where three, uh, or two co-op members intend to raise their crops, so, um, I think that, so I, I think that that extra half acre doesn't, doesn't really add much. We have plenty of control and safeguards in the draft bylaw, so what does that additional half acre really provide? Potentially a larger building, I suppose. But, you know, the Massachusetts Enabling Act on the size of parcels for agriculture really, really is for the protection of the farmer, not the abutters. Which is another reason I don't think it's necessary. But, but primarily, I, I don't want to, you know, put Pure Joy Farm out of business, because then I think the whole by, uh, bylaw will fail, um, because they're a very important part of the co-op.
And Bruce, what do you think? You know, what they say, compromise.
I think that's what we want to accomplish here. I was just thinking, have we already, uh, meeting of the Chuck Snyder on the weekend?
No, I hope not. I hope not. It's not that I don't want, I just think that the part of this that we're doing now is the deliberation part. And if we have to act, if we have to accept more input into the board from anyone, we have to accept it from everyone. And therefore, we can't accept it from anyone. So don't tell me that you read an email that directs us in a certain direction, because that's, uh, actually not going to help us at this point. I have to be honest about that. I understand everyone's concerns about protecting Truro and all of that. And make this bylaw work. The question we have on our, right in front of us right now is two acres versus one and a half, or... Or something else? Which we don't really know what it would be. Since an absolute number would be the best thing for us right here, what would we, what, what could we use in, um, square footage? How about that? Maybe we can't. Because if you don't have two acres, and that eliminates you from receiving a permit, and yet you have the better part of two acres, that seems unfair. So, Jack, you have a solution you can use? Not at the moment, Mr. Chairman. If I may refer to, uh, the right to farm bylaw as adopted by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts under section three, right to farm declaration. The right to farm is hereby recognized to exist within the town, in this case it would be, um, Truro, although, I'm just using this as an example, we're not adopting that. The above-described agricultural activities may occur on holidays, weekends, weekdays, and weekends by night or day, and shall include the intended incidental noise, odors, dust, and fumes associated with normally accepted agricultural practices. It is hereby determined that whatever impact may be caused to others through the normal practice of agriculture is more than offset by the benefits of farming to the neighborhood community and society in general. Well, this has never been proposed to purchasers of residential properties here in town. So I think by adopting smaller parcels that will allow proliferation of potentially, um, commercial marijuana pursuits within residential areas should be something which we tread very lightly on. And certainly, as it's proposed here, embrace some of the protections to open space through farming activities, but yet recognizing that there's already many established, as I said before, residential neighborhoods where, depending upon how our bylaws constructed, could result in aspects of those growing activities to be objectionable. And I don't know if we even have enough teeth in the proposed bylaw to address those issues going forward, or if we'll potentially always be trying to catch up. So that's why I asked for the serious consideration of two acres to reduce the potential number of sites that could be pursued in residential areas. Well, I would say this. You used the word proliferation, and I don't think that's what was going to happen. I think that there's a, a lot of controls already. How many, uh, let's go back to that use table that we had there. How many possible co-ops could we possibly have in the residential district? Because a prolifer, proliferation? Proliferation?
Currently, we have only, we're allowing only one license and only six parcels, so that...
So it doesn't sound too much like a proliferation to me.
No, and, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but, you know, maybe Katie could clarify some things, because I think I'm getting a little mixed up here on right to farm and on, on cannabis cultivation. I mean, many people say it isn't farming. But I think that right to farm is to protect the farmers, so not the abutters. So, I think it's, it's a little mixed up. And if you take it down to 1.5, then the farmers don't enjoy all these right to farm provisions. Um, so it seems to me we're better off to have 1.5 than to have two, and then claim they have... and then claim they have a right to farm, which again, I don't think is really applicable. And again, it was to protect horse farms, for example, that are less than five acres. They can continue to have horses and all the odor and all the various things involved with horse farms or nurseries or some other kind of farm. I just don't think it's really applicable here. And again, we want it to be less because we now want to highly regulate it, which we've been given the right to do under the statute concerning farm structures that we can regulate ones related to cannabis. They're exempted from the exception. So I mean, Katie, do you have a view of this in terms of legally how the right to farm factors in?
So we're kind of talking a little bit about apples and oranges here. I mean, right to farm is, as Karen identified, it's basically a policy that the town adopted with respect to how it's going to be treated and allowed for farming. It doesn't really impact what you're doing under the zoning. It's a general bylaw versus zoning bylaw. So what you need to do is determine, determine your time, place and manner restrictions with respect to these specific uses and right to farm doesn't really inform that. It's really sort of a separate set of policies that apply to encouraging farming within your community.
I think we have a lot of control. I think that the idea of the 1.5 acre is not a negative. And we've worked through most of this using the 1.5. But we'll use consensus. I think Jack would like to hold to the two. Bruce? There are only four of us here today, so. If we held it at two, that would eliminate at least two of the growers from using eight, a parcel that they have already had several meetings on using. So I think that would be bad faith too. Mr. Chairman, when they're close to two acres, it seems like, you know, it's just not a spite move.
Mr. Chairman, it's not a spite move at all. In fact, I'm willing to adopt a one and a half acre zone. And as much as we are limiting the number of permits initially to a, well, one, in which case except for the retail sale. And recognize that going forward, we may wish to amend this to two acres. But I think it's valuable to have this discussion so that anyone from the public can see how we've tried to consider all of the effects that this might have in established residential neighborhoods.
Okay, I appreciate that you can see that we need to actually get this done before we put too many controls to stop something that's not done. So that's a good idea. Now let's just talk about the setback. What it looks like to me is that you took the setback that's accepted of 25 feet and doubled it. I don't know, not necessarily you, I'm just saying, but as a farmer, aren't you allowed to farm right up to the property line? I'm thinking more in terms of if you're farming outdoors up to the property line, then where does the security fencing go? Okay, so this is the kind of thing that is important. If you need to enclose something with a security fence, the security fence would need to follow the setbacks. So I think we just need to be clear on what we're talking about when. And so if it's marijuana cultivation and it needs to be secure, then that security has to follow the town's setbacks. And I would like to be able to make that wording work, so it's perfectly clear. That you don't just, you know, grow marijuana right up to your neighbor's property line and you put the fence on his property. Not acceptable. So. I, you know, I don't know about trying to double the setback. I think the setback requirements are 25 feet. I'm not opposed to imposing those setbacks on this. I think that's important. We have plenty of other controls already for noise, smell, screening, and all those would have to be provided beyond the 25-foot setback.
Mr. Chairman, I'm well aware of, in my own case, what a 25-foot setback occurs on my own property. And I'm aware of what it looks like, what it would look like if I had a security fence there. My concern is that, again, if these pursuits go on residential neighborhoods, what kind of security fencing is going to be located within a very close proximity of your neighbor? We're not talking about just a cute split rail fence here, which are pretty much intrusive. I'm thinking more about the security type fencing that can be intrusive. And how do you disguise that? I'm not sure. That's why I like the 50-foot limit to be considered.
Well, I think outside plan review requires a landscaping plan, so we would see case by case. I don't think we can predict it all right now. So again, we have general safeguards with, they have to present a landscaping plan and show us where the fence would go and how the fence, I mean, it might be a wooden privacy fence, but it's not unpleasant to look at. Nobody's planning to do barbed wire. In fact, I think we've specifically prohibited that. So I don't find that concerning because of the site plan review criteria. I wouldn't put any.
Extra limit.
Extra limit, no.
We would leave the limits that we have as far as our own zoning bylaws and take it on a case by case basis, especially if it were to be that the neighbor, the abutter, has a clear and open yard, yeah, we'd have to have more concerns. If, like most people, we have some woods. Sorry. I'm going to have to take this call from, because I have a home meeting. Now I don't have to take this call. Yes. Am I allowed to say yes? Okay, where was I? Okay, let's just hold on because what we need to try to do is get through this bylaw without making it impossible to happen and then decide on who gets the special permit. I need to allow the language that we have right now without changing it to excessive setbacks. Recognizing that our site plan review will provide us the ability to look at each instance and make a clear decision. Okay, where were we? Total aggregate floor area, oh. Okay, so that's, we stopped at that line there. Was there anything that needed to be left in from number two? So if we can eliminate the rest of number two and leave that as our... Jack, are you aware of that? Total aggregate floor area of all enclosed, we're going to try to get rid of the coverage concept? Yes. Thank you. Karen? Bruce? That's a better idea. That puts us into a whole other ballpark of coverage. Number three. The planning board may impose on all applicants reasonable fees for the employment of outside consultants to review applications submitted in accordance with this section of the bylaw and to assist with review of such plans and applications. The planning board may adopt administrative regulations governing site plan review and special permits which shall be in addition to the requirements set out below. So we're revisiting this section now, Justin.
We are.
Here we are. Karen, you have anything on this section here to help us with this?
Oh, well, I'm not sure if we even need the last sentence about adopting administrative regs because I've read that in other sections of the bylaw and I've never seen regs anywhere that the planning board has adopted. You know, we're governed by the bylaw, so is that really something we need? Katie can speak to that? And plus, if we're, depending on who's doing a special permit, we wouldn't be adopting regulations if we're not the special permit granting authority, I would think. But I don't know.
I appreciate that Karen talked to you.
Do you want me to take it up?
Yes, please, Katie.
All right, so inherent in the planning board or the zoning board story is the ability to adopt administrative regulations governing your special permit process. Regulations don't need to be voted by the county meeting, they're not a bylaw, but they cannot be substantive in that they can't set the standards for your permit review authority. They can however, set your requirements, for example, how many copies of the planing they want, who those plans get submitted to, what, you know, how the hearing gets scheduled or the applicant obligations in those regards. So it's really administrative and procedural regulations. Now, there's a provision of state law that says if you want to charge outside consultant fees for reviewed applications, you can adopt a regulation which requires the applicant to pay for that to review. It doesn't need to be in your bylaw specified that they're obligated to pay that fee. It can simply be adopted as a regulation. But there has to be a regulation in place in order for you to have the authority to set the extra account to charge those fees.
So mostly this is an administrative section.
This section does not necessarily need to be in your bylaw in order for you to have outside consultants to review applications, but if you aren't going to hire outside consultants, you will need to adopt as a board at a meeting a regulation that allows you to do that. Or you could just leave it here.
So we could just leave it here?
Yeah.
Or we could see where else in our bylaws we actually say this, which I think we do. I think we adopted this. And it might be that we want a copy of the application sent somewhere that we don't know yet. Application requirements is next. And the following submissions shall be required as part of a special permit site plan review application with the planning board. This part we have gone through. This would be number one, a security plan. The applicant shall submit a copy of its security plan approved by the commission as part of the issuance of a provisional license to the police and fire departments for their review and approval prior to the issuance of a special permit. This is eggs, oh, this is chickens and eggs again for me here. There's a reason, the reason it's chicken and eggs is when does the cannabis commission approve a security plan? Before or after the town's police department or fire department approves? Just want to make sure that the.
I think it should be before.
Katie, I'm going to defer to you just to make sure we don't put it in the wrong order here.
So this one is a call for you to make in terms of whether or not you want to have these applications come before the commission has reviewed it. The idea behind this language was that the applicant's security plan would be fully formed and vetted by the commission as part of the issuance of a provisional license before they got the issuance of a special permit. That way, you know, you're not reviewing something that could potentially be subject to change on the state level. So that was the idea of.
Let me interrupt.
Commission vetted permit.
I want to interrupt you because in your experience, does an approval come from the state first? Or do they get a, just an acknowledgement that they've submitted a plan and then work from an acknowledgement that they have submitted a plan and it's not approved until everybody in the town approves it?
They can get a provisional license prior to obtaining their local permit. So we may want to clarify this language, but the idea here that says the applicant submits a copy of the security plan, comes approved by the commission as part of their issuance of a provisional license prior to the issuance of a special permit. So what is required here is that you get their provisional license before the issuance of a special permit. So security is reviewed and approved by the commission before you grant a special permit.
Okay, security first, provisional license second, then special permit or review by the, review by the town departments and then hopefully we would get a report from the police or fire department after they reviewed. It's so easy to just wave along some of this stuff and just go, oh. It's all going to be smooth sailing. Security plan, I'm going to leave this wording just as it is and move along. Security plan shall be updated on a manual basis and any changes shall be reported as soon as required. So A and B, we're going to leave. And now C says the security plan shall meet all security requirements of 935 CMR 500 dot 110. Those are right numbers, Katie?
Yes.
Okay. I think that we'll need to have experience before we can say that this is really right. Number two, a resource plan for all, I'm losing it, resource plan. A, all marijuana cultivators, including but not limited to craft marijuana cooperatives and micro businesses, MMTCCPS, and marijuana product manufacturers, shall submit a resource use plan to the planning board. Mer problem. And to the planning board outlining planned practice. And to the planning board outlining planned practices for use of energy, comma, water, comma, waste disposal, and other common resources, and to ensure there will be no undue damage to the natural environment. Mr. Chairman, should there be a comma after waste disposal, followed by and, other common Grammatically, that's an either-or. I don't think it's always there. Okay. But I'm not, I'm not actually an English teacher. I would even defer to the word perfect or whatever windows were to decide. So, traffic steady circulation plan, the applicant shall submit a traffic circulation plan to the site to ensure the safe movement of pedestrian or vehicle traffic on the site. We'd have to say this applies mostly to a retail store. See how much traffic there will be to an actual cultivator, perhaps some. A traffic impact and access study shall be required for all marijuana retailers and The study shall be based on standard traffic engineering guidelines developed by the Massachusetts Environmental Protection Act, which is there as may be. Then, the planning board may waive the requirement of a traffic impact study if, in the opinion of what a traffic impact study is not necessary to ensure safe movement of pedestrian or vehicular traffic on site. Waiving power, okay. That ends that page. We have this section at the end, which is additional provisions. Is that what the section we're on now?
That's right, yeah.
Some of these we thought about moving already, correct? No, we didn't. Additional provisions regarding cultivation. In addition to the special permit criteria under 30.8 and SPR criteria under section 70.3 and 70.4, the board should take...
Oh, that should be changed.
...into consideration. Means if that's gonna be part of this bylaw.
Yeah, this first one we've got, it would make me moving to the next section.
So number one is all site plan review and special permits, special permit determinations shall be conducted on a case-by-case basis, taking into consideration, one, the particular form of marijuana activity proposed, two, the site location, including proximity of a butter's schools or sensitive natural habitat, or historic properties identified in the town's inventory of historic resources. Number three, traditional uses of the site and their similarity to or difference from the proposed activities. And four, the intensity of the proposed activities, including impacts on neighbors and the environment. So this is pertaining to special permits. And we have a section for special permit criteria, Karen?
I don't think we have a standalone section.
Well, it's gonna be at the end, we haven't really gone through it yet.
Oh, okay, we're gonna move.
It's our last section. Subsection I.
Special permit and site plan review criteria. Okay, so let's call this one...
What's CPN, do you care, lady?
In what?
In the special section.
I think they're applicable to that because this is just additional thoughts that haven't found a home in the bylaw yet. That's what I thought.
Right, yeah, that's right.
They're thoughts that are pertinent to the bylaw but not actually having a spot except a place called additional provisions, which actually, this one would be special permit criteria. The figures that you look at to issue a special permit. Mr. Chairman? Yes, Jack? Should not these criteria be part of site plan review as well? I believe it says both of them, right?
Yes, but you didn't identify twice as only special permit.
That's my oversight, my oversight, and so, special permit and site plan review criteria. Yeah, I think we haven't, we haven't nailed down the difference between site plan review and what the special permit is and who's gonna do why. We haven't nailed that down yet. And I'm also now of the opinion, I'd love to share the responsibility with another board. I feel the target is getting really big. So, let's consider that as criteria for special permit and site plan. The number two, all special permit applications shall include the following, so these are special permit requirements, or the site plan review requirements. Let us decide that. Special permit applications shall include the following. One, a copy of a provisional license or provisional certificate of registration from the state of Massachusetts as an RME under 935 CMR 500 dot zero zero, or an MMTC under 105 CMR 725.
Katie, should we change that?
That's gotta be changed, right, Katie?
All right, can you repeat that?
Yes, I will repeat it. This is where we go under the RME described as 935 CMR 500 dot zero zero, or MMTC.
Yep, yep, that's gonna be 935 CMR 501 point zero zero and not 105 CMR 725.
Okay?
Yeah.
An executed host agreement.
Host community.
A host community agreement. Three, a site plan showing existing conditions on the site and the boundaries of any proposed outdoor growing area. Elevations is four, of any proposed new construction for indoor growing and your processing. We're gonna help with that. All it says is elevations, any proposed new construction for indoor growing and your processing.
I think this whole paragraph is a little bit duplicative and, you know, we have, we don't wanna, I don't think we want to vary from what's already in the bylaw for what you have to show in a site plan application, and this kind of purports to change that, I think, from what we have in section 30 and I think it's section 70. And we've already addressed on the page before, resource plan, security plan, et cetera. So, so I don't know, maybe it is somewhat duplicative.
Well, I can agree that it might sound like it's a repeat, and that's why we're doing this too, because what might not be duplicate is that you do have to have the host community agreement. And I haven't really heard that before. And the other thing is, site plan, this might be duplicate, is the site plan showing existing conditions on the site and the boundaries.
Well, we have talked about the host community agreement.
Right, where?
Community specific. In this case, we're talking Truro and Waltham.
Well, it will be specific to Truro.
Is it a real good proposal?
Yes, but we won't have anything to do with that agreement with Waltham. We will only have to deal with their agreement with Truro. Mr. Chairman? Yes, Jack? Special permit applications as well as site plan review must they are approved, then need to be recorded, the registered deeds. So, you know, they are official documents, and when they are recorded, there is no mistake going forward as to what was agreed to. So what you're saying is that you'd like to have a place where it says, "If you recorded"? No, that is a requirement according to state law, but even though we may see some duplications here, and if there are duplications in fact, then it should just be a matter of making additional copies of what was approved at the site plan for them approving a special permit here. And, I'm so sorry. I'm gonna have to take a short break. Yes, this is, yes, this is you.